Okay. Seven P M. And I'd like to call to the March twenty second, two thousand twenty one, City Council meeting to order. Because of COVID nineteen restrictions, our meeting tonight will be held. Virtually via Zoom. Public comments for this meeting were accepted in advance by mail, any mail. And these comments will be read into the public record shortly. If you would like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit our website at W W W dot Merriam dot org and follow the directions listed there. As normal, our reminder is to the City Council to please be conscientious of others trying to speak, speak slowly and clearly, state your name prior to speaking. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. The format for council consideration on items tonight will be staff presentation first. And then I will open up the time for council questions. Please hold questions until the end of the staff presentation. If you have a question when I ask for them, please physically raise your hand. So I can see it on on your video. We will now do our pledge allegiance, so I'll ask the flag to be shown on the screen and then ask everyone to please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, visible with liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
It's just not quite the same, is it? In person.
Yep.
We'll get there eventually. Um, Julie, would you please call our role for the evening?
Yes, Mr. Sizemore.
Here.
Councilmember.
Hi, excuse me, here, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Call Do.
Here.
Councilmember Nat.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Pope.
Here.
Councilmember Silver.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Very good, present in counting form. Let's get to public comments, Julie, would you please any or please read any public comments that were submitted in advance into into the record, please?
We had no public comments submitted this evening, Mayor.
Okay, very good. And we'll move into our consent agenda. We only have one item this evening, and that's consider approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting held on March eighth, two thousand twenty one. So unless there are questions, I'll entertain a motion. Any questions? Bob Pope.
I was just going to entertain a motion, Mayor, if you're ready for that.
Yes, I am.
I've moved the council approved, considered, and out of number one.
And Chris Hands, your second.
I am seconding.
Motion made in second, Madam Clerk.
I'm ready, bold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Call Do.
Aye.
Councilmember Nat.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pope.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Have one item under the mayor's report this evening, it's a proclamation. It's in support of a effort called seven days supportive cities. Let me go ahead and get read into this, and if there are any questions, we can save that at the end. Whereas seven days makes a ripple change the world is an annual series of events demonstrating how hatred bigotry and ignorance can be overcome by kindness, respect, and understanding. And whereas seven days commemorates the lives of Dr. William Corporon, his grandson, Reach Underwood, and Teresa Lamano, who were murdered on April thirteenth, two thousand fourteen by encouraging all people to discover commonalities and overcome evil acts with kindness. And whereas seven days, two thousand twenty one, is April thirteenth through April twenty fifth, and includes a focus on kindness through activities with daily themes of love, discovery. I'm sorry, love, discover, you, others, connect, go, and onward, and whereas Mariam is committed to be a community where kindness is key and understanding is paramount and stands in strong partnership to support this worthy outreach effort. Now, therefore, I can system by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Mariam, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the city of Mariam to be a seven day supportive city and urge all citizens and civic organizations to participate in the virtual activities through the seven day website, which is givesevendays.org, and it's capital G for give, capital S for seven, and capital D for days dot org, and nurture a culture of peace and harmony amongst all segments of our community, proclaim this twenty second day of March twenty twenty one. This was an effort that I was brought is brought to my attention by a resident of the city, encouraging us to join other cities. Looked like a pretty worthy cause, we can certainly all use more of these attributes in our lives, especially given the turmoil that we face in 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 our in our world today, so anything you can do, be much appreciated. Any questions about that before we go move on? Okay. Uh, we're going to move right into Planning Commission. Brian, would you talk about our twenty forty comprehensive plans, please?
Brian, I think you're muted.
Oh. I pushed it and my mouse didn't obey, sorry about that. Again, um, getting council members, Mayor Brian Dar, Community Development Director. This evening is a culmination of a two year effort for the creation of a new comprehensive plan to guide the sitting mayor's development, establish a vision for the for the city for the next twenty years to year twenty forty. Obviously, when we started this process, there nobody was discussing pandemic, and the pandemic came right in the middle of it. So I'd like to first of all, give some recognition to Confluence and their team for the way they handled the situation in a professional manner, where they pivoted very quickly into a much more virtual realm. And we're able still to gather a large amount of input, comments, and solicitation on the comprehensive plan from the residents. Also like to recognize the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, group of folks, Mariam residents, business owners, stakeholders, folks who have an interest in the comprehensive plan, they met over, they met eight times during this process and really guided the plan, really set the tone for the plan. And I know I had a very good time with them, they're an excellent group, have a lot of great input, and I'm sure that Confluence and their team would also agree with that as well. So again, this evening, this is the final step, hopefully, and there's the adoption of the plan. Your planning commission on May third held a public hearing on this item, there were no public comments at that hearing. And then following the closing of the public hearing, the planning commission unanimously adopted a resolution adopting the comprehensive plan and also recommending that the plan, excuse me, that the City Council do the same. So I know you all have had a lot of involvement in this plan, but this evening, Confluence and their team and their team are going to go through the state statute required aspects of a comprehensive plan for you to see me. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris Klein and his team.
Well, thank you very much, Brian, Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of our entire team of Confluence, W S P, Leland, and Collins, No Tyson Associates, thank you all for the opportunity to work with you, the Planning Commission, the Steering Committee, and the rest of the community on a comprehensive plan that we hope fulfills and meets the vision that the city has for the coming years to guide growth and development. We've been gratified to work with all of you throughout this process. As Brian mentioned, we have had some hiccups along the way with COVID, and we're able to incorporate lots of virtual interaction throughout this process, and in fact, I think we ended up with a much more robust level of public engagement and involvement than we might have had we just had in person meetings. So you'll hear from most of the members of our team tonight, we'll we'll cover at a very high level the aspects that are in the plan. I'll talk just briefly about the schedule, the public input summary and proposed changes. You'll hear some of the Kansas State requirements that a comprehensive plan has to achieve, and and we've got those covered. You'll hear a little bit about each chapter, and then we'll leave time for next steps and questions. So our scope and schedule, we started back in July of twenty nineteen. Again, not a not a hint of COVID in the air at the time. We did have some in person meetings, we had lots of good interaction at several festivals, you'll hear about in a second. We moved into visioning input and direction. And then as we were making our way through that process is when COVID hit and we had to to stop, we we paused for just a little bit, recalibrated how we were going to engage the the community and the rest of the committee safely through this process. We were able to to do that, we picked back up and continued on with the work, next slide. Phase three, we got into the draft plan and evaluation, and that was back in the fall of twenty twenty, working towards the beginning of this year. And then we again met with the Planning Commission just earlier this month. And we're before you tonight to hopefully bless the the final plan. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Marshall Allen, who's a planner with our firm to talk about the public involvement. And again, thank you on behalf of our entire team.
Great, thanks, Chris. I'm going to go over a high level of some of the public input that we did receive in the process that we went through. We had the virtual public open house, which was was pretty well attended. We also then shortly thereafter displayed really the meat of the comprehensive plan on several display boards, both at City Hall and in the community center. So folks that were visiting those facilities were able to to brush up on the information and be informed of what the plan was really talking about. We then had the draft plan available online for review and comment. And then, as you may recall, we had the joint workshop with with the City Council and the Planning Commission members. So for the public open house, you know, that was back in beginning of the year, January sixth, it also incorporated some interactive questions using that online polling app. And so we were able to get that real live feedback right as the public workshop was happening, which then continued to inform the development of the plan. And then the comments that we received during those during that public input are integrated into this presentation. As I mentioned, we had the display boards at in Mariam City Hall and in the community center, and those were up from January fourteenth to January twenty ninth. We did only receive one comment card, but we are confident that many eyes did pass through those two buildings over that course of time, and and this information was displayed to those folks. As I mentioned, we did have the draft available online for review and comment, again, we had zero comments. But we felt it was important to offer the plan for review in this medium as well, just to make sure it is broadcast to as many folks as possible. As I mentioned, we had the joint workshop with with you all on the planning commission, this was on February third, and we had quite a robust and productive conversation about the future land use plan, which I will speak about here shortly. Yeah, on this slide, so we, if you recall, we talked about that area right up along the northern boundary of Mariam, along Knox Avenue, and the discussion really was what what should that area be represented as in terms of future land use? And so this is the language that has been put into the comprehensive plan, and I'm going to just read this really quick, just so that we're all on the same page. The property west of Knox Avenue between West Forty Seventh and West Forty Ninth Street is one of the last largely undeveloped properties within Mariam. This site is under multiple ownerships and contains several homes. Due to its location, it is ideal for residential land uses, but so far has not attracted attention for development. Currently zoned R one single family residential, a single family subdivision may be the most palatable development option for the surrounding property owners, and if financially feasible, would be welcomed by the city. However, a well designed and attractive town home or row house development may also be appropriate for all or a portion of this property. Any request for rezoning to allow for a town home or row house type development should be processed as a planned unit development so that very specific site and building design standards can be established to ensure the design and style of the development is attractive and compatible with the surrounding single family neighborhood. So we feel this is a really good middle of the road approach, understanding that residential is for sure the best land use up here. If single family were to come along, that would be okay. But if it requires more of that medium density residential, that it has to go through those other additional steps to make sure that it is compatible with the neighborhood and designed to the highest quality possible. So if anybody has any questions about that or comments, you know, feel free to speak up, but that was based off of our productive conversation that we had with you all during that public joint workshop, excuse me.
I think Jason has his hand up for questions.
I just had a comment, I think I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate the fact that. Well, first, I want to say that I appreciate the additional language, but I would be remiss to not mention that I disagree with the medium density residential, especially if it turns into row houses. In the in your presentation, it shows up to three stories, which I don't think is in line with the surrounding neighborhood. But like I said, I do appreciate the rewording in in the plan.
Good. Any other questions before? You can continue, Mr. Allen.
Okay, great, thanks, and thanks for the comment. And so this is how that Knox Avenue area will be identified in the future land use plan called out labeled in kind of in the same style as that South Park sub area plan as well. We did make a change to one of the action items under goal number one, and the goal is to increase the amount and diversity of available housing units. And so you'll see there at the bottom that now action item two states consider revising the zoning code regulations to allow for increased density in single family areas. Revisions could include the creating of a smaller slot, single family zoning district, allowing accessory dwelling units and etc., etc. So this is in response to a lot of the conversations that we had over the course of the development of this plan to allow for a slight densification of some of the single family neighborhoods without taking away the character of those neighborhoods. We did receive comment, a good comment about making sure that the plan reflected the diversity of the community. So we we went through and and made sure a lot of those images that we're showing throughout the entire plan do reflect that diversity, folks of all different backgrounds, we want to make sure that anybody who reads this plan, you know, sees imagery that really makes them feel like this plan is is written for them as well. We added some language in the amenities and service enhancement area, speaking about the the library. And we just wanted to make sure we included language in this paragraph, really supporting the the new library that will be built in the future near the community center. And so the last statement or last sentence of that second paragraph, this joint investment of the Johnson County Library Board in the city of Mariam is a great step towards maintaining and improving upon the quality of life and amenities provided to Mariam residents, so just reassuring and making sure that this plan is supportive of those investments. And I will pass it off to Chris Shires.
All right, Marshall, thank you so much. Let's go to the next slide, and so state law does provide us guidance on the required elements that we must consider within our comprehensive plan, in fact, they are very specific that we have to cover the seven that you see on our screen, and we're going to go through those one by one. So first, the comprehensive plan must consider and provide information related to future land use. Where do we have areas for agricultural uses, residential uses, business, industry, rec areas, educational, public, community facilities, infrastructure, utilities, things such as that, and of course, that's one of the major components of this comprehensive plan, mostly housed within our future land use section. And then the next one, we must consider the population and building intensity standards and restrictions that this plan will propose. One of the big things that the comprehensive plan does serve as is the legal basis or the basis for for zoning code and zoning regulations. And so this comprehensive plan in that, again, that that future land use section, as well as the kind of the population analysis section, includes some recommendations and guidance related to population density standards. And the next one, we must consider public facilities, specifically including transportation type facilities. And of course, we have an entire section just talking about this transit, pedestrian vehicle, all the different ways people move around. And then in the next one, we also need to include, consider the public improvement programming. Where do we need to spend infrastructure dollars for maintenance, improvement, expansion? And of course, we provided some recommendations and guidance for future study and analysis. And then the next one, we also have to consider where those public dollars are being spent. Were public revenues going from a kind of a long term basis, long term financing of capital improvement plans? And then that economic feasibility of that, and that's really where that implementation chapter, the the kind of the end of the document really comes into play, helping to guy guide the city's budgeting and more most specifically the C I P capital improvement planning processes. We also need to consider the utilization and conservation of natural resources, and so we have that kind of covered in a few areas, but definitely reflected into the future land use map as well, some of the policy guidance and recommendations for parkland, green space, and floodplain development. Or I should say floodplain preservation. And then finally, we have to consider any other elements necessarily necessary to properly develop or redevelop within our planning boundary, and of course, this plan has multiple sub area plan considerations, those focus areas, including even the Knox Avenue area that we just discussed earlier. So any questions on that, we can either answer now or kind of jump, leave that to the end, but that's our our statutory review of what we have to have in the plan.
Any questions? You may proceed.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. The next part we're going to do is do a really high level overview of the plan chapters. We know that you guys have all seen this before, but we felt it was important at this kind of, you know, final meeting to go through that with you all. So as you'll recall, this plan is divided into three sections and then two supplemental reports. The first section is that introduction where we kind of talk about why we plan, what the vision statement was, what the plan goals were, go over the existing plans and policies. Section two is really the largest part, this is the plan recommendation areas, and it's broken into seven different chapters that we'll go through in a little bit more detail after this. Section three is the implementation, which really takes all of the goals and action items from chapter or section two and puts them in kind of one place that can be easily referenced by the city. And then two supplemental reports, the existing conditions report and the public input summary report, all of which are referenced throughout the entire plan. The first chapter is the community, character, and identity, and this is where we really talk about all those things that make Mariam unique and how we can continue to enhance that and promote that within the community, looking at housing, looking about, this is a very affordable community, but what has really high quality amenities. We've identified ways to improve Mariam's identity, you know, highlight the convenient location, celebrate history and diversity, really support our neighborhood centers in downtown, and then address some of those issues that are created by kind of the benefits of having Interstate thirty five go through the community and lots of your major arterials, but also some of those kind of negative side effects of having those, you know, high high traffic roadways throughout your community. So that's all discussed within this chapter. The second chapter is amenities and service enhancements, and this is really taking a deeper dive into what the city should be promoting. What are some recommendations for how to kind of enhance your amenities in the future? So we look at the fact that it's a big benefit that you guys have the hospital within your city limits, looking at medical and social services. We do take a moment to highlight all of the educational opportunities, K three twelve education, kind of easy access to higher education, as well as support for the library. We talk about the park system, and then a master trails plan is put into this section. We talk about all of the city buildings and land that you guys have and how you should kind of maintain a quality portfolio, which you guys already do, just kind of understanding that you should continue to do that. We identify several different health and wellness indicators that the city should keep in mind, as well as address public safety. You guys do a great job of that, you know, you exceed standards across the board, but just continuing to provide that. And then we also start to promote sustainable infrastructure solutions, which are talked about more in depth in a later chapter. The third chapter of the section two is for the sub area plans that were completed. So as you'll recall, we did some special area plans for Mariam Town Center, downtown Mariam, and then the formerly jeans headquarters sites. And this is really where those concepts and some of the input and feedback that we received are housed. There's also this within the public input summary, but this is within the plan where those are making sure that we keep, we make it very clear in the chapter that this would require full support of the property owners, these are just ideas of what could potentially, you know, happen on the site in the future. Transfer, and then for transportation and mobility, I'm actually going to hand it over to Jay or Jared, I don't remember, I'm sorry, but one of our partners from W S P.
We're both here, but I'll be doing this one. So we did take a look at the entire multimodal transportation system within Mariam, looked at existing conditions. And from there, we developed a series of best practices and recommendations, all under the guise of really improving safety for all modes of transportation throughout the city. So some of the recommendations we came up with, looking at roadways, some potential opportunities to reconfigure some of the lanes on the four, a four lane undivided roadways within the city that tend to have the the highest volume of crashes. And so we can get a lot of bang for our buck and improvements there if we are to maybe reallocate that lane space for two lanes in each direction with the center turn lane, gives us more opportunity to maybe install off street bicycle facilities or other sidewalk pedestrian amenities there. So recommended some studies to to look at that in more in depth. Looked at improvement to traffic signals and specific intersections that have higher rates of crashes. And then also looking at improving sidewalks, filling out the complete sidewalk and bicycle grid to form a complete network throughout the entire city. And then finally, looking at some specific street crossing locations, especially on Shawnee Mission Parkway, Antioch, and some of the other busier streets, it can be kind of difficult to cross with higher speeds and just wider streets to get across. A key recommendation we have is looking at specific improvements to get bicycles and pedestrians across I thirty five. It's a significant barrier that's that's dividing the city. And so we we made some recommendations of how we could probably get those together in the future. And then lastly, we looked at public transit, how could we increase usage? What are some improvements we could make to specific stops throughout the city to make using transit more convenient and safer in the future?
All right, thanks, Jared. And then the last chapter I'm going to talk about is promoting prosperity. So this was really a, in addition to the, some of the more detailed market analysis stuff that was included in the existing conditions report, but the promoting prosperity chapter does a highlight of those market analysis conditions within Mariam, but then also takes a deeper dive into what economic vitality really looks like for a city with Mariam size and location within a larger metro area, and how a lot of promoting prosperity is going to be about quality of life and how to enhance that within the community and, you know, making the best of what you have now and finding ways to enhance it. There was a whole discussion about mixed use and infill projects being kind of that main source of more densification. And then alongside that, there, you know, we address some of the positives and negatives in terms of redeveloping Mariam Town Center, the Legion headquarters site, downtown Mariam, as well as taking a look at that key mark site. This also addressed things like kind of that Mick, missing middle housing and a variety of other factors that were included within this chapter as well. And then Marshall's going to talk to you about the rest of the chapters.
Yeah, great, thanks, Jane. So chapter six in section two is called sustainable development. And so this is really looking at implementing or looking at strategies and different policies that can be implemented to really make sure that we are keeping the natural environment and the environment in general in mind as we move forward. So this looks at implementing strategies to promote harmony with nature, so looking at floodplain management, overall use of green infrastructure, the tree cover of Mariam and maintaining that. Overall use of green infrastructure, the tree cover of Miriam and maintaining that. Use of permeable surfaces, uh, reducing waste and recycling, looking at options for alternative energy. And then retrofitting of buildings in a sustainable way. Another important factor of this is looking at it from an equity standpoint and making sure that there is an equitable quality of life. Uh, for all of Miriam's residents. Uh, so housing for all backgrounds. The equitable distribution and access of city services. And looking through the environmental justice lens with, you know, floodplain uh, management and protection. Topics such as that, um, partake in and support regional cooperation and planning in Johnson County, understanding that your neighbors to the east, west. North and south are all very important and uh, it really will take that cooperation between all those municipalities to. Uh, really make a impact in terms of sustainability in the environment. Planning for a future oriented mobility and transportation system. This is looking at things from trails to sidewalks and parks. Public transit and micro mobility and future modes um, like Jared just talked about. And then really striving for that uh, livable built environment with that healthy and resilient mix of land uses. Land use diversity, maintaining that land use diversity and then resilient retail and commercial areas as well as an intentional uh, strategy for public land. And then chapter seven that we titled uh, creating place. And so this is where the future land use map uh, lives within the document. Um, but before it gets to that uh, item, it looks at, you know, really making sure that. Miriam continues to sustain the community engagement and empowerment. You know, it's designing with people and for people. Uh, Miriam does a great job with that. So maintaining that moving forward. Connecting the different cultural amenities within the community, looking at those key corridors that do connect those cultural amenities. Um, and providing safe and equal access across them. Um, again, equal access throughout Miriam, and that's looking at sidewalks, bicycle infrastructure and public transit in addition to the roadways. Encouraging those quality and active public spaces, uh, maintaining the parks continually looking at the needs and desires of residents. And then also uh, incorporating public spaces into mixed use redevelopments and providing strategies for that. Uh, looking at place making elements, gateways, landscaping standards, shared parking, making sure there is that diverse housing stock. That supports, you know, residents of all different needs and and ages, and then encouraging those high quality uh, architectural elements, design and materials. And then again, like I said, this is where the uh, future land use map lives. So this is, you've seen this before, but this is what the overall map looks like. And I believe the next few slides are just some close ins, the northern area of the city. Uh, calling out the downtown sub area, the Miriam Town Center sub area. Um, and as we move further south, um, again downtown and Miriam Town Center, this also labels that Shawnee Mission Parkway corridor. Uh, from a, the study from previous years, uh, the formerly jeans site sub area. And then all the land uses down to the medical center. And then finally, really briefly, the implementation section. Um, so this is like Jane said earlier, this is just where all the different action items come together in one cohesive central location. Uh, for easy reference and you'll see here what the layout looks like, uh, series of goals. Followed by several different variations and amounts of action items to just keep the, you know. Easy reference for the city to implement a lot of these different uh, elements that we've talked about throughout this plan. And with that, we are, we will be finished presenting the plan to you. And if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer any.
Mister Neil.
Yeah, I I primarily have a comment. I I think you guys did a great job and uh, I appreciate the work. Um, the one area that I a little bit concerned about, or at least. Um, is the, is the idea of reducing some of our major four lane arterial arterial streets into. Two lanes, uh, particularly Antioch. And since I live on Antioch, my concern has to do with the traffic volumes. And I recognize that this plan actually just calls for study of that. And I think that that is 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 certainly a a good idea, fine. And uh, I welcome the study of it. And I I hope that uh, that that is feasible to do that, given how close we are to the um. To I thirty five and the amount of traffic that we have. Uh, I, when Prairie Village did this on Noll, um, it was a a road that I. Uh, took a lot. And uh, once that that was done. Um, the the volume of traffic re- was reduced substantially. I and other drivers took Noll less frequently. Um, so the traffic obviously moved somewhere else. And my concern is that. Um, given our proximity to a major interstate. Uh, quarter, there's may not be a lot of places that people can go. Uh, other than residential neighborhoods. And so I certainly don't wanna push traffic off of. Artery arteries like Antioch into their residential neighborhoods. Yeah, so that's, that would be my my only reservation other than that, um, and and that we handle, I think, with this plan. So. Um, appreciate the opportunity to make that comment.
No, thanks, David. Yeah, I I think that uh, you know, it 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 deserves further study, any of these corridors. And and to take into account the specific traffic that is is using that corridor. So that's, that's what this plan is recommending is. Additional study be taken before any uh, road diet or anything else uh, occurs on those corridors.
Any other questions? Comments? Uh, Chris hands.
Um, first off, if I can have whoever sharing their screen to give us full access again, I think that would be helpful to see everyone. And then secondly, I I want to say I'm um, thought being a part of this process. Because I was a member of the c- committee was really an invaluable exercise. Not just in words smothering and second guessing, but in learning what our other representatives had to say at various times. I wish that we could have gone on in person, not just for the cookies, but for for um. Getting those perspectives, because it was invaluable. Should have done it a long time ago in my career, I think. So, thank you for doing that.
Any other comments? Um, I guess I'll uh, close this out then. Uh, I wanna thank everybody who worked on this. And I I echo the comments of the council. Uh, I think many times we underestimate the importance of having these documents in place. Uh, professional cities. Have used these documents to guide them uh, in whatever ways they find helpful. I do know that this, it's difficult for some people because they. They bring about a potential, maybe that an individual doesn't wanna see in their area, that this this document doesn't guarantee anything, but. That is a potential plan that might be considered someday if someone wishes to do so. And you know, having having a group of people from outside look at it, our city. And and look at it in a way from a professional standpoint. Gives us a different view that I think most of us on the council truly appreciate. So. Again, I want to thank you for all that you do. Uh, and uh, I'm sure this document will come into handy in the future. On on many, in many different ways. So, thank you very much. I guess we need to have a vote, however. So, I've got a couple hands, I think, uh, of of the hands, the hands, hands came up first. So Chris hands, you get to go make the motion.
Thank you. Mister Mayor, I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the planning commission. And approve an ordinance adopting the twenty forty comprehensive plan. As the comprehensive plan for the city of Miriam and authorize the mayor to sign the effectuating ordinance.
And Bob Pape, did you want to second that?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to second that. Thank you.
So a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember hands.
Aye.
Councilmember called on. Please talk, okay.
Aye.
Councilmember now.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Aye.
And demeritism, you get to vote.
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Very good. Thanks again, uh, ladies and gentlemen, for all the work that you did. We're gonna move into uh. Council items. And um, the first item, uh, we're gonna talk about is consider approval of serving alcohol and waiving caterers license fees for. Couple events. Uh, so Anna, I'll let you uh, wade into this. Anna Sokum, our director of Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Um, good evening, Council. Um, before you this evening is an agreement to um. Are to ask permission to waive the fees for um, the caterer's license for two events, one of which is new. Um, it's going to be concert in the courtyard at the Miriam Community Center. The other one is Miriam Drive Live, which we've done this motion several years now. Um, it allows us to have um, alcohol and our beer and wine. And waive the fee associated for the caterer to be able to serve that at our event.
That seems simple enough. Anybody have any questions uh? About uh, any of these ends events and regarding alcohol sale or anything like that. Uh, we have had, luckily we've had some experience with this. I think it's always been good. There's always, there's always potential that I think it's managed well. Uh, it's something that uh. Uh, we hope to grow, continue to grow. Uh, so if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Bob Pape.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd move that the uh, I move that the council approve waiving the caterer's license. For concert in the courtyard and Miriam Drive Live, two city sponsored and funded events. Uh, assuming that Anna can keep it from raining.
I'll do my best.
Councilwoman hands.
And I'll second that.
A motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Um, actually, real quick before we vote, um, I think the part about serving alcohol was left out of that motion.
I mean, the written portion, the written version of the port of the.
I didn't hear Bob say the serving alcohol part. I just heard the waving, the catering fee. So I just wanna make sure that we're voting on the correct.
Okay, I guess to your point, the uh, item is to consider, as you stated, is to consider approval of serving alcohol. And waiving the caterer's licensing fee. So it may be more appropriate for you to amend your motion to include serving alcohol.
Okay, is it, uh, I'd be glad to uh, amend my emotion. I I thought that was gonna be a separate motion for serving um, on the second one, but. Uh, the caterer's fee for serving of uh, alcoholic beverages.
If it is, we can do it twice.
And I'll sec- I'll second again.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second? No further questions. I'll ask our clerk to call the book for the vote.
Councilmember called on.
Aye, yes.
Councilmember now.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Aye.
Councilmember hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Second item, uh. Under the, under this heading, uh, I mean, I guess the second item under council items is consider approval of an ordinance authorizing cell consumption. And possession of alcoholic liquor during certain parks and recreation special events. Anna, will you provide us an update?
Um, this is the second reading of the ordinance, Mayor, and this um, allows us to extend the consumption outside. Of um, park property. So at Miriam Drive Live, we will be using, our plan is to use. The former uh, fifty seven oh one site. And so in order to allow the alcohol to leave from the designated area on our property, cross sidewalk and street, we need this ordinance. And that's where the um, exhibit A comes into, comes into effect that we looked at last meeting. Um, it's the same uh, zoned area that we have used the past, um, I guess, two years since last year was canceled. Um, when we've had Miriam Drive Live and have served alcohol. So this is allowing um, that uh, consumption to occur. Um, in those areas.
And from my recollection, this is, in this, during this event, is Miriam Drive closed?
Yes, that is correct. We will close it the same way we close, well, we've, the plan is um, is to close it the same way we close. Um, it for the car show at fifty seventh street and fifty eighth terrace.
Yeah, and I only bring this up because some people might be visualizing uh, us allowing people to cross an active street. Alcoholic, I knew that that wasn't the case, but I just wanna make sure that's that's stated. Mister Pape.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a question for Anna. Uh, the map showed uh, the old site that had the parking lot. Is that actually go over to, I mean, we, obviously, there's no parking lot there anymore. So. Does that go, go all the way over to Kessler now instead of imaginary area in the middle of that lot?
We'll probably draw a line, because there's a, there's a potential that we, depending on what's happening that day. We might have to use some of that grass. Jim's probably gonna cringe when I say this for parking. Um, so we will try and keep it to the best of that, um, to our, to to our ability. Um, instead of making the whole area um. Uh, a designated area for drinking, unknowing what we might need to do for parking. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
It does. Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well then I'll entertain a motion and a second on this item. Bob Pape.
Mayor, I I'd move the council proven ordinance authorizing the cell consumption and possession of alcohol during certain parks and recreations, special events.
And the second. Chris hands.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember now.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember DeBolt.
Aye.
Councilmember hands.
Aye.
Councilmember called on.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Third item on our list this evening. You know, we got some pretty important items on this agenda this evening. I'm amazing. I'm amazed at how quickly we're getting through them. So. I probably just jinked that, jinxed that, but we'll see. Uh, item number three is the E T C Citizen Survey Results Presentation. Uh, Mister Angle, do you like to talk about this?
I would, Mayor. Uh, thank you. I'm gonna share my screen here. I hope. Everybody see that? Alright, outstanding. The uh, next item on the agenda is our twenty twenty one resident citizen survey. Uh, pretty excited to get this back in. We periodically send these out. This is the fourth one that we've released. Uh, or at least it's come back in since I've been here. So we've had twenty twelve, twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen. This is the twenty twenty one. Edition of, uh, I don't know if it's always been a council goal, but it is a current council goal and that council goes one point two dash A. Conduct a resident and business survey every three years to gauge public perception on service delivery. I think it's important to recognize that this is public perception. So this is really a snapshot in history. It's a snapshot in time of when people fill out the survey. We don't know exactly what's going on in their lives when they fill them out. We hope that it's filled out in a vacuum and that all of these things are. Uh, uh, you know, are 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 not influenced by the daily uh, things that uh, interfere with our lives. But we just don't know. It is a snapshot. Uh, so uh, I, I don't know how council members choose to use this. I choose to use this really as an opportunity to true up or recalibrate my compass, maybe to validate some things that I think I. I think I know about the community, kind of a, we, we all have a tendency to think we have a decent gauge with our different, with a variety of uh, data points. Of what's going on in the community, whether that's social media or the people that we talk to or how we talk to one another. Uh, so I I always view this as being a, a good um, uh, a good recalibration. Way, because I believe in my heart of hearts that we do great things. I think we do great work. I think that uh. Uh, we do the right thing for the right reasons at the right time. And I think when we get this back. we do the right thing for the right reasons at the right time. And I think when we get this back, very seldom we ever surprised. I mean, sure, there are going to be some things that pop up on here. We look at, we kind of want to overanalyze, but I think this is a great opportunity every three years to gauge the public and again, hopefully revalidate the things that we already know. And that's that we do a lot of good work around here. Just as a primer, everybody that was around in twenty eighteen, or twenty eighteen, when we got to twenty eighteen, I think one of the things that I was clear to share is that there wasn't a whole lot of room to improve over twenty eighteen. We set the high watermark and we were, I hopefully prepared you that there were, in at least a comparative analysis, Miriam twenty eighteen versus what twenty twenty one likely could be. We could see some numbers that would go down. We did see some of that and, and that's okay. I'm happy to talk about some of those things. And I think we should be mindful of them, but most of this presentation, similar to the twenty eighteen presentation, is really going to be informed by not just how we compare to our past, Miriam's past, but how we compare to the regional benchmarks and the national benchmarks. Because I think that's really how we stack up against what our neighbors are doing both nationally and regionally. So from a methodology standpoint, this was filled out by four hundred and three residents. We need at least four hundred, well, we shoot for four hundred. We need at least about three hundred and seventy one, about somewhere around there in order to get this four point nine margin of, four point nine percent margin of error at a ninety five percent level of confidence, which is kind of the gold standard for, for statistics. That being said, because the margin of error is four point nine percent plus or minus, changes of five percent are more up or down are considered statistically significant, which means they, that's likely something that we need to look at, whether it looks like it's going up one percent, down two percent, up ten percent. Changes of five, anything less than five, kind of is what we would say kind of falls within the margins of where we're at. So again, as I mentioned before, this report compares our results in twenty twenty one to past results, national benchmarks, and then some regional benchmarks. Inside the, the, the report itself, it lists all of the cities that it compares us to. But you can see some of those named here, quite a few Johnson County cities and other regional cities that we may or may consider to be benchmark cities against ourselves, but I just felt like calling some of those out. Any questions about the methodology or my intro?
Mr. Neil.
Just a quick question. Are there, is there anything, any of the benchmarks that would more reflect Johnson County, for example, Kansas City, Missouri, I suspect will pull down the average for, for the, the regional benchmark. I don't know that for a fact, and I don't know how heavily weighted that is in, in this, but is there, was there any benchmarking done that is more you know, specific to, you know, to our, our area, closer, closer in area?
It is my understanding that, that the, the Kansas Missouri benchmarks are kind of how they group all of them when they do anybody that's in this region, because they do them nationally, so they kind of just group geographic areas together. I can ask them if they'd be willing to redo some of this and eliminate particular cities. If there's particular cities you think the council thinks we shouldn't be compared to. This is, this is just how we've always done it. But I can ask, going forward, if, if that's a, if that's a package deal or that's some sort of offering that they can do, I, I suppose we could say we want to be compared to any number of cities would be my guess.
Yeah, I, I just was curious because I, I, I see, you know, a couple of cities, specifically Kansas City, Missouri, that, you know, if it's heavily weighted, you know, by population in terms of the region, I, you know, like I said, I don't know how it's done, but I don't think that's very much like us and might have an impact on, on the numbers. So that's all.
Mr. Pate, do you have a question, comment?
Yeah, Mayor, my question is just, is this exact same cities that we used in the previous years and the previous surveys? So I mean, there's some validity there, at least in benchmarking.
It, it's a standard, it's a standard Midwestern package. So this is, is my understanding that this is who, all, all of these cities participate in the survey and they continually get compared to each other in that Kansas Missouri benchmark.
Okay.
Is my understanding. Now, we, we could, again, I'm, they clearly have the data for these cities. So I mean, we, we could go through here and we could say, hey, we'd like to be compared to the, well, I'm assuming we can't. Say we'd like to be compared to these ten cities or just Kansas cities or just Johnson County cities or whoever. I mean, whoever we determine are, are benchmark cities. Let me look into that and I'll see what, see what we can get back. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get it back for this survey, but maybe going forward, we could have a list of benchmarks. I just, I don't have that information, but so I'll, I'll look into it.
I can understand Mr. Neil's concern, particularly given the size of Kansas City. However, if we were to change this, it would impact the continuity from past years. And also, it seems like it may be a, the regional standard. So then put us aside, set aside from the standard and make it very difficult for us to compare ourselves with other survey recipients. And I really think there is value in trying to figure out because, for example, in the areas where we have gone down, I'd be very interested knowing if that's been, if that's a national or or metro trend. If we exclude one of the largest parts of that metro area out, and it hasn't been excluded in the past, that's gonna skew our results in the sense that we will have more difficulty in deciding whether that, that was the reason for the change or, or whether it's something else. Mr. Neil.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Mayor. I was actually talking about maybe an additional benchmark as opposed to taking that out.
Okay. Well, that's easier to, that's certainly easier to figure into a potential. Ms. Hands.
And this is a little bit different, but I wondered overall if ETC mentions that they could see that where things either went up or went down, if it was consistent against everyone, and if possibly there was a pandemic element to the responses, like all of us are really sick and tired of blah, blah, blah. So we're gonna be happier or less happy with our city.
Sure. I asked the question if there was a COVID effect and there was, their response was there was not a COVID effect. However, I also went back and looked at the last survey and looked at what the regional and the national benchmarks were, and many of them went down, but they went down within the margin. So they went down from fifty percent approval to forty seven percent approval. So it's not significant enough to actually say that there was an effect. But on the slides tonight, I'm happy to share the ones that had a, we saw a decrease from twenty eighteen.
Well, let's get rolling then. We'll see how it works out.
All right. So Miriam continues to set the standard and about, in almost ninety five percent of all the categories that they do check, we exceeded both national and regional benchmarks. We set the high watermark in the following categories, all under streets, city maintenance, maintenance of major city streets, mowing and trimming, large item pickup, maintenance, neighborhood streets and maintenance of curbs and sidewalks. For those five categories, also set the standard in twenty eighteen. So at least when it comes to city maintenance, Miriam continues to screw up the curve for all of the rest of the nation and the, the regional benchmarks. And I would think really, when you think about it in terms of what, at least this is how I choose to think about it, when you think about really what is one of the core functions of local government that is really to take care of our infrastructure, it's to use the tax dollars to improve the, the built environment that we operate in. Clearly, our residents recognize that. They see some value in it and at least on this particular day, they were, we're, we're happy to share that they acknowledge that that's happening a lot. And it, again, it, it sets the high watermark. So I think that's something we should all be very, very pleased with. And I've said in the past before, I think that is a really due to a council philosophy that we should be investing in CIP in many, many, many cities, all of the ones I've ever worked at, most of the ones that I'm aware of. No one starts the budget discussions with the CIP first. It's let's do all the other things and whatever's left, that's what we'll use to take care of our city. That is a that, that's clearly evident here that we don't do things that way, which is why we set the benchmark in taking care of our streets, because it is a council priority, and I think our residents appreciate that, right? So, so the way that this is ordered is the same way it was in twenty eighteen. We basically pull a, a variety of questions out and plug them into our council goals and our council goals and objectives so that we can kind of see from some broad categories how we're accomplishing these broad goals. We have four goals and objectives, budget goals and objectives. And so they're broke up in that particular order. There may be questions that I don't cover. I'm happy to answer some of those, but I don't go through every single data point I did in eighteen. I don't didn't intend to do it this, this evening, but I'm happy to answer any of those or prognosticate on why something happened or didn't happen. So please, I'm happy to answer those questions. Overall quality of life, again, ninety percent, that's pretty fantastic, within the margins of the ninety two where it was in eighteen. We've got a good trend line on there. It's continuing to go up. When you look at it versus the, the regional average and the US average, you know, we're, we're around twenty points higher than both of those. That's, that's just fantastic. I mean, at the end of the day, overall quality of life is where we ask people, it's the one, it's the speedometer on the dashboard. It's all of the things rolled together that we do and all of the different departments and the efforts that we put in in that how people recognize the quality of life.
Ms. Hands, you have a question?
I do. I had this question when I was reviewing the information this afternoon as well. So the boxes where you have the averages for the city and the national benchmark, are those this year's numbers?
Those are, they're the ones that were on the report. I, I mean, they may not be twenty one, but they're twenty. They're the last round of ones when they establish the benchmarks. I don't know exactly when all those surveys were taken.
Since, since the line goes through all of these years, I just wanted to be sure it's the most current information.
Oh, no, yeah, right, understood. Yes, this is for the twenty twenty one. So these have been moved because in eighteen, in many instances, they were in a different location. So they had to be updated for the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you very much.
So again, overall quality of life, ninety percent, that's fantastic. I, you know, I think there are cities that would would kill to have those numbers. Overall image of Miriam, seventy four versus seventy seven. It was seventy three, two surveys ago, sixty six and two thousand and six. When you look at that versus the regional and the US average, again, we're ten to fifteen points ahead on all of those. Three percent, three percent decrease, depending on where we're at within the margin of error, still has a good trend line on it. Looks like we're heading up from at least where we were in two thousand and six. And I think we all know that. I think anybody that's talked to anybody that lives in our community for the last five, ten, fifteen years would tell you that Miriam is on an upward, we are, we are Miriam rising. That sun is coming up, not setting. So I think that, you know, that's a, that's, that's clearly evident here in the, the image that people have of our city. Cities' efforts to inform about local issues. This was one that I would have to prognosticate on a little bit. There was a decrease in it, at least in the US average and in the regional average. So the US average is forty three. It had been forty six three years ago. The regional, that was the US average, I'm sorry, was forty six. Now it's forty three. The, the regional average used to be fifty six. It's went down to fifty five. We've experienced what we would consider to be a significant decrease from seventy seven to seventy, still compared to years prior. We're still in a good place. The, if I had to guess what's going on in this one, we had just in eighteen, in January of eighteen, December of seventeen, we had just spent a year essentially about every three weeks putting something in people's mailboxes about the community center. So we were, we were sending out special mailers. We were sending out sales. I mean, there, we drowned people for the six months prior to this. So my guess would be, if I was guessing, that that is probably why it was so high, because people felt like probably they, they were receiving maybe too much information from us. But that would be my guess of why it was so high, because it is once again back aligned with fifteen and twelve. So I'm not overly concerned about this. We really didn't have a whole heck of a lot to say. I think, well, there may not be a COVID effect. I find it hard to believe COVID doesn't have some sort of an impact on these numbers. COVID, clearly, we weren't doing a whole lot last year, so people probably didn't hear from us as much as they had in the past. Those are just guesses on my part. At least of why eighteen was so high and potentially why twenty one compared to eighteen came down. But again, it's at seventy percent. It's fifteen, fifteen points higher than the region. You know, higher than that than the US average. So I think that we're still in a pretty good place, but it's something we need to keep an eye on. And then I think the, the question that's important for the communication staff who do a great job and really push out a lot of the good work that we do is how are residents connecting with us? And I just put in there versus twenty eighteen, so we can see highlights. Went down a little bit, but it's still our number one outlet that people get information from us. The city website has went up a little bit. Mailers have went down. Again, that might just be because I don't think we mailed, did any direct mailers last year, because we weren't doing anything. Local news has unfortunately went down pretty significantly, eleven percent. Now, what's rolled in local news? I don't know. Is that TV? Is that Shawnee Mission Post? Is that Star? I don't know what that is. Local news is just the word that they use. Nextdoor has went up. E. Miriam has, is holding steady, and then social media clearly has had a increase of eight percent. So that is becoming a larger medium for people to get information from the city is through social media. But clearly, the Highlights Magazine is still our bread and butter. That is how we connect with our residents, which, which is great. We can do a little bit deeper dive sometimes in those things and we can make them look prettier and they might have a little more shelf life in somebody's house perhaps, but the reality is that we only release those so many times a year. So they are sometimes unfortunately not as relevant or as timely as some of the other things that we put out. But clearly, we're starting to drive people, or at least they're just picking up new habits, to some of the ones that are a little bit more relevant and timely in terms of new information. Second, budgetary goal that we have is provide exceptional service delivery. I got something that we pride ourselves on, overall quality of city services, eighty eight percent, down from ninety one, but again, aligned with twenty fifteen, higher than it was in oh six. And you can see it, it doubles what the local regional average is, and it's forty percent higher than the US average. Clearly, whoever it is they're talking to nationally and regionally does not think that highly of the quality of their city services, at least relative to what our residents do. So I think this is a, this is a, a great stat we should celebrate.
Just to think Mr. Neil had a question or a comment.
Sure.
Yeah, I think actually this slide is exactly, exactly one of the reasons why I'd like to see another benchmark, which is more local, because that's way down and I, I can't imagine that too many of our nearby cities are in that lower level, but I'd like to know if they are. I mean, I'd like to know that. So that's reason, again, that I just don't think that's enough for us to really compare ourselves realistically with our closer in neighbors, which we do on many other things. So that, that was the reason I brought that up. And I would definitely like to see if that's possible to do that.
So, so just to, I, I, understanding what you're looking for, is eighty eight percent compared to ninety one, is eighty eight percent not good? I mean, because we try to put all this information up here so we can extrapolate what we need to, to see where, where we are, what we're doing. I mean, I'll, I'll get whatever information I can, but do you not trust the information enough to think that we're doing well?
No, I think, no, that's not it at all. I think we are doing well. What I'm curious about, I guess, is why the number is so low for the region? And, and then that's, that's, that's more of it than, than anything. Yeah, I mean, eighty eight percent is great, obviously. So I'm not criticizing in that regard. I'm just trying to understand, you know, how we fit comparatively to other communities close, closer by, that's all.
Sure. To just Johnson County would be a nice compare.
I, I will, I will see what, I will, I'll see what I need to do to do that, see if that's something that they can just give me, or if that's something that's a, a package. Like I, I, I just don't know. So, but they have the data clearly because it's included in there. So yeah, I will check up on that.
I think another, maybe another way of putting it would be, and, and I can understand what Mr. Neil's saying, if there was a third box at the bottom and it was Johnson County only, and it had whatever that breakdown, because, you know, it is And it was Johnson County only, and it had whatever that breakdown, because, you know, it is very possible that Johnson County only might be eighty. They may be averaging eighty percent, uh, I wouldn't be surprised.
Sure.
And, and certainly, if we're deviating as, as a city in Johnson County from the other cities in Johnson County. That, that might be relevant to our future, uh, u- use in terms of this type of survey. So, and certainly it's something I'm sure e- the company could, could accommodate us with either with this survey or within future surveys.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely ask, I'll reach out to them.
Ms. Hands?
I, I'm also fairly certain that it, I mean, it would be a ton of phone calls, but the cities that we now participate. Probably could give us the number and we could compare with them that way.
Yeah.
I'll ask E. T. C.
Okay.
So cu- customer service, uh, I think this is probably one of the most, at least from, from my perspective as the city administrator. Probably one of the most important slides in the four questions that we asked, because I mean, I think from a standpoint of customer service, this is really. Uh, this is the perception that people have when they interact with my staff. This is the face that they see at the front counter, this is the voice that answers the phone, this is the person they run into on the street. Uh, and so this is the, the snapshot perception of how they, how they interacted. How, how, how the, the issue or the conversation, that transaction resolved itself. And so, uh, I think this is a, 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 a great slide that indicates, again, we're doing the right thing, right time, for the right reason. And quite possibly, we're always doing it with a smile, or at least ninety-three percent of the time, we're doing it with a smile. So resolved issue to satisfaction in twenty-one, it loo- looks like it possibly ticked up by one percent. Uh, followed through on what was discussed, eighty-two versus eighty, it was eighty-two, three, six years ago. Uh, prompt accurate answers, eighty-one versus eighty-five, but again, like the one above it, it's perfectly aligned with where it was in twenty fifteen. And then courteous implied it was at ninety-three percent somewhere, you know, I mean, again, good trend line on all of those. You can see your regional and your, uh, your regional benchmarks are going to be in red, your national ones are going to be in green. We fall considerably above all of those, so again, I think this is a testament to your, uh, your frontline staff. Uh, in terms of how they're interacting with the residents and providing services, uh, trying to do what they say they're going to do, when they say they're going to do it. And I think there's some positive recognition and affirmation of that here, so I think these are all good, good figures, these are things that make me proud to, uh, work with these folks. Quality of leadership elec- from elected officials, uh, this actually kicked down nationally. This was one that had, had a decrease nationally and regionally, uh, went to sixty-four from seventy-three. Um, prognosticating, I don't know, I mean, in the last three years, we've done quite a bit. If you're gonna make omelets, you break eggs sometimes, um, there's really no telling. It's more aligned with where fifteen was and where six was, uh, but again, it did, I, it experienced a decrease. Uh, other than that, I mean, you look at all these other things, people generally, for the most part, it doesn't look. Appreciate the quality of leadership from elected officials, and it's no surprise that that's married with the city administrator and staff. Uh, which is also at sixty-four percent, uh, this one also had a decrease both regionally and nationally. In terms of, uh, effectiveness of city administrator and staff, both of them, again, married together. If you put them, you know, if you look at them both side by side, you're pretty much, we're in this together, folks. So, that's, 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 that's about my interpretation of that, is that I think we, again, we've, we've had some. Some, well, I don't know what we were doing in twenty eighteen, I mean, that's a pretty high number, so, you know, I. It was, it was great to have it, but it looks like we're probably more back down aligned to where. Where we sh- should be, or where, at least where the average should be. Again, not something that we should not investigate, not something that we should want to see higher, but I don't know how to move that number. One way or another.
I think, I think a lot of this really has to do with, have you, you know, those of us that lived through twenty eighteen. There were a lot of opportunities for the public to observe leadership because of the principal issue at hand. And it was something in the media, whether, which, no matter which side you're on, the council took leadership positions. And those, those positions were examined and they were, um, you know, something that was seen in the media frequently enough. I think, you know, in the last couple of years, we haven't really, you know, I mean, it's always been my, uh, uh, goal to say out of the media. I figure you're better off when that happens, sometimes you can't avoid it, uh, but as far as the public goes, they're thinking, well, you know, I really haven't seen anything recently. So maybe they just haven't rated us high for that reason, possibly. Mr. Pape?
Yeah, man, I, I'd like to think that part of it is just, uh, you know, we are government, whether it be local versus, uh, national. I think the national leadership took a really heavy hit, uh, over this last few years. And, and I, I, I personally, I guess, want to think that they brought us down a little bit, so.
Yeah, possible, absolutely. Okay, Ms. Angle, you can continue.
Uh, third, um, bu- the budgetary goal, improve fiscal conditions and property values. Uh, overall value received for tax dollars, this is another one that I think if, if you could pick one or two slides. This is the one that you'd really want to pay attention to and kind of see where you fall in there. Seventy-three percent, seventy-seven percent in eighteen, seventy-four percent fifteen, sixty-three percent in oh-six, I think you got a good trend line on there. Uh, you can see versus the regional and the national averages, we're still in a good place. This is again, overall, this is people, nobody likes taxation, nobody thinks that their money is being spent the way they would spend it. Or appropriately enough, this clearly, when you have seventy-three percent, if that, uh, the amount of folks that it is in a community. That, that recognize an overs- overall value for the way their tax dollars are spent, that's what you want. I mean, that's, that's fantastic, and it almost makes you wonder how the leadership could be sixty-four, but the overall value could be. Seventy-three when the things are all tied together so, uh, inextricably. But, uh, again, I'd much rather see these numbers be high than my own numbers, to be quite honest with you. Because this actually is the one that says to me that we actually are doing the right things with, with the taxpayers' money. And it's, and it's, and it's recognized, so seventy-three percent versus the, the regional and the, uh, national averages here. And this is one that was actually split oddly enough, uh, this is one, the national average is down by a point. But the regional average crept up by a point, so, uh, three years ago, the regional average was forty. And the US average was thirty-eight, so this one actually split a little bit between national and regional. Overall condition of housing, um, seventy-eight percent, looks like we're pretty much aligned with where we've been in the past. There are no regional benchmarks, this was a Merriam specific question that we started asking, uh, in twenty twelve, so it looks like. Looks like we're about where we've always been, and it'd be great if we're actually picking up, but that's hard really to tell. Uh, again, because of our margins of error, but it looks like we're pretty consistent. It, it sure doesn't look like we're sliding back on our overall condition of housing, which is probably the most important thing to take away from all of this. Um, uh, yeah. Overall feeling of safety, this is another one that we don't quite, we, we ask it as two questions, we ask it in your neighborhood during night. Uh, eighty-three percent, fantastic, safety is probably the most salient thing that we feel. We don't, it, we can show somebody all the data in the world, but if we don't feel safe, we're not safe. Uh, and so the fact that, uh, at night, eighty-three percent of folks feel safe in their neighborhood. And during the day, ninety-seven percent of people feel safe in their, their neighborhood, I think that that's fantastic, that's probably. Uh, other than managing, uh, infrastructure, that's probably tied for one, or it's one point. A, uh, in terms of what our core function is as local government, so the fact that people feel safe. Uh, to just kind of give you an idea of the, where the number was, in April of twenty, we had the twenty forty, the Comp Plan twenty forty. E. T. C. Administered Survey, and they asked just a general question of your overall feeling of safety, and that was at eighty-eight percent. So that was April, so eighty-eight percent, uh, is a general question, uh, without breaking it up by night and day. But at some point, around two thousand and six, I guess we started asking the two questions, but I think these are fantastic numbers too. Again, people, uh, feeling safe in their neighborhood is, that's what you want when you're in your own neighborhood, right? Enforcing maintenance of residential property, uh, this one's pretty much aligned with where it's been in the past. Uh, it remains higher than the US average or the regional average, uh, with the comp cities that they have given us in the study. Uh, this is again, um, with residential property, and then we'll talk about commercial property. This could be, even though it's pretty much aligned with what it has been in the past, there could be a COVID effect here. Because we really did loosen up some of our enforcement of codes, you know, we, th- this last year, people were at home. We didn't know if they were at home for work, or if they were at home because they didn't have work, so we were pretty flexible on how we enforce codes. So it's quite possible that if this is some sort of a negative effect, it very well could have been a clearly evident negative effect. Because we, we tried to work with people a little bit more in this last year in terms of, uh, addressing codes, uh, codes issues. Last, uh, budget goal that we, uh, we have is our maintain economic vitality. Um, how's the city planning new development, this is a Merriam specific question, this is probably the biggest one. That I had questions about of what exactly it meant, uh, is this, it's clearly a significant decrease. What, even if you look at fifteen, or especially if you look at eighteen, is this a vacant Kmart issue? Is this a missing grocery store issue, is this, uh, is this a comment on what people would like to see downtown? Um, I, I, I just, I'm not sure, I don't know if we, we could know, we could probably discuss this. But clearly, there is a decrease, um, in how the city's planning new development. I, I, if I had to guess, I would guess it has to do with the grocery store and Kmart. Um, and some of that, we could maybe pull out of the individual questions we asked at the end of the survey. Uh, but in exactly what was on people's minds when they filled this out, I, I, I don't know. And I don't know that we could ever really kind of parse through all of that. But this clearly is a significant decline and something we need to be aware of and be a little bit more thoughtful of, uh, when we make these decisions. Or when we become more proactive to spur development in our community.
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Um, yeah, so I, and when you're looking at all the things that didn't happen. I also want to keep in mind those of us who live close to Switzer Villas, that did happen. You would think that would have been a little bit of an upper.
Well, sure, Switzer Senior Villas, Audi, um, uh, the Reed Chrysler Ju- I mean, we have had the community center. Those are all positive developments that weren't here three years ago, so it makes it all the more, um, of, of a curiosity. Of what exactly is driving this decrease?
Ms. Neal?
Yeah, I, you know, again, obviously, we can all speculate on this, uh, it, it's, it's possible. You can read this a couple of different ways, in, you know, you can look at it as our, our, is there dissatisfaction with. The fact that we haven't done certain things, or is there a dissatisfaction in the perceived process by which we do things? That could also be a factor too, so I'm just saying, I don't know what the answer is either, I'm just saying that it's, it's not that we, it, the way that. It's worded, it's not really saying, you know, are we not planning enough new development, or are we planning too much? We don't know, it just says how the city is planning new development, so I think we need to keep that in mind, we need to, we know, we do need to know more about what this means over time, so.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms., Ms. Angle.
Whitney's got her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Whitney.
This is, um, Councilmember Yadrich, I, I think it's a good point that, um, well, I think I'm about to make a good point. Um, is, there's, there's value in terms of tax dollars and, um, you know, economic vitality for the city. But there's also perceived value, which is, um, the things that, uh, affect citizens every day. And their, you know, daily life, strides to work, comes from work, trips to the store, those kinds of things. And, um, the, the perceived loss of those things, I, or, or lack of action on those things. I think I can empathize with in, in that sense, um, of the lack of movement on the Kmart lot. And the loss of a grocery store and, and those things that, that do impact my eyesight and my everyday action. Um, so I want to separate those two things, while we know we've had a, a lot of development the last few years. We also have those perceived areas, um, that are reality, because they are impacting people every day.
Good point. Any other questions or comments?
I say thank you, I'm glad I prefaced myself by saying I was gonna make a good point.
Yeah, I, and, and I, you know, I, we can't deny the fact that a lot of people drive by Kmart and it didn't get any prettier over, over there, so. Uh, it's hard to say really, I mean, it's, it's probably like most things, it's a combination. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I question, uh, how, how much new development. We can actually look forward to having in a city our size, given the fact that we're landlocked and fully developed for the most part. So it's, it's tough, I don't know, I mean, it's really tough to strive, uh, especially given the fact that you mentioned three projects. That were certainly, uh, developed and, and developed well, but again, uh, you know. People are less likely to notice the Audi dealership than they are to miss the grocery store, and I think that was Ms. Yadrich's point. So it's possible that, that has had impacted on that. Anybody else? Okay.
Uh, enforcing maintenance of commercial property, uh, this was one that also, uh, saw a decrease, um. Regionally and nationally, as well as us, uh, significant, uh, in that it is larger than five percent. We went from sixty-six to sixty, it had been at sixty-three, it was a fifty-five in oh-six, uh, again, is this, um. Is this a commentary on downtown, is this a, um, is this? Is there a COVID effect, because we've been a little more lax on some of these things in the last year? We really don't know, I mean, I, I, I think when I look at the averages, when I look at where we've been, I don't, I mean, I think we need to be aware of it. I don't think that it's necessarily alarming, I mean, we are, we're three years older than we were in twenty eighteen, all the buildings are three years older. Again, I don't know, it, when, uh, enforcing maintenance of commercial property, is this the flowers in front of Home Depot? Or is this the dumpster on the side of Sonic on Fifty-Fifth and Marion Drive? I, I, we just, we just don't know that, um, but it clearly something that we need to be cognizant of, that our residents. Uh, as we look at some of these later recommendations that are in the report, want us to continue to ride hurt over, as we should anyway. Uh, flow of traffic and congestion management, I think this is a partially a planning thing, I think it's also just a probably, uh, commentary on our streets. Is up, uh, perhaps seventy-four to seventy-eight, uh, we got a good trend line on this from the past. The averages of the region and US are down, uh, this one saw a split regionally. Uh, it went down actually regionally from fifty percent to forty-five. So, uh, whoever, whoever it is that's in our region, uh, that was a significant decrease. Over the last three years from fifty to forty-five, and then it, uh, it held the same for the US average, it was fifty-one percent. So, uh, whoever's in those groups, I mean, we are, we're significantly higher than those. So I feel like we do a pretty good job, and I don't know how much we can really manage traffic or congestion, other than. Aligning more of our lights with OGL, which I think all of our major thoroughfares are aligned with OGL. So, uh, again, I think this looks, uh, pretty good.
Mr. Pape?
I, I know the answer to that question as to why we're so high, and we can thank Johnson County in the state of Kansas. I thirty-five was a bottleneck, that extra lane has made a tremendous difference. And I, well, I would almost put money that that's the reason that one shot up.
Uh, that, but that's actually a good point, it very well could be, it could be, we'll take credit for it.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll take credit.
But yeah, that, that would probably, that's probably is the most significant thing, is I think since I've been here to improve, uh, uh, traffic congestion. Feeling of safety in commercial areas, this is another, uh, Merriam specific question, so we don't have any benchmarking data other than our past. Looks like we're right aligned with where we've always been, which is great, so again, you know, when we go back to twenty oh-six. Depending on how people define commercial areas, whether that's Merriam Town Center, whether that's up on Shawnee Mission Parkway, if that's Merriam Drive. Clearly, whatever people are thinking of in terms of the commercial areas, we're holding steady, so I think that's, uh, that's, uh, that's a good thing. Um, areas of opportunity, these are things that popped up in their importance, satisfaction. Areas of opportunity, these are things that popped up in their importance satisfaction analysis. Basically, the way that they determine these things are percentage of respondents that rated a service as being either the first, second, or third priority o- over the next several years. So they ask those questions. Not only do they ask questions about overall satisfaction, they ask questions about what priority this should be. And then basically they combine those two data points to determine an overall satisfaction level. And they rate them either very high, high or medium priority. So these are areas of opportunity that were rated very high or high. Uh, all other priorities are just basically mean, keep doing what you're doing. You're in a good place with them. So public safety cities, overall effort to prevent crime. I think it's important to point out that this was rated very highly, but as common sense would tell you, this is something that we all want cities to continue to focus on, no matter how satisfied we are. We want people, uh, we want, uh, the city to continue to focus on preventing crime. And then we've got four, uh, code enforcement things on here, enforcing cleanup of litter and debris, maintenance of rental properties, maintenance of residential properties, mowing, trimming of residential properties. Uh, all of these, uh, all rated above our regional and national benchmarks. But again, they're clearly important to our residents, which is why they receive higher rankings in areas we should place emphasis on. So they are, they are areas of opportunity. So these are, these are things that, uh, in addition to just anything else in the survey that they pointed out that, that we need to be mindful of because there's some, uh, potentially low hanging fruit in these, these numbers.
Mr. Neal, do you have some comments?
Yeah, it's more of a question, uh, because I don't remember the exact wording of the surveys, but it, it could be that your situations where, you know, I, I think it might've been something about, wasn't, was it about ranked in your order of priority, which need the, you know, the most improvement? And, and if, if that's the case, rather than this is a, you know, to put, you know, mark the things that you think really need improvement, you're going to get answers that are different. That it's the most important thing of, of a group of things that are already being done well or for, or is it, you know, was, are the questions worded in such a way that they have to pick out things that they think are not, you know, up to, you know, up to standards? Is it, do you understand my question? I don't know how I'm asking it. So I think the wording of the questions might lead to looking like there might be a problem in these areas when there's not.
Um, well, yeah, I'm not saying that there's a problem in all of these. I'm actually saying that, that I think maybe we're saying the same thing or I'm, or I'm answering your question. Snow removal rated very high, uh, as it always does, as, as we would expect snow removal to do. But because we do it so well, it's not the number one priority. So they don't have an importance matrix on it because it was not the first, second, or third thing that we should focus on. It doesn't mean we shouldn't focus on it. It just means that, that when, when asked about, um, a service, so the city's overall efforts to prevent crime, that was, that was the ninth most, that was the, that was rated ninth in terms of satisfaction. But it was the number one, or actually it was the thing that showed up in most survey responses as being the first, second, or third priority we should focus on. So, so it's, it was, it had the highest ranking that we should place emphasis on, but the, but it, but the satisfaction level was lower. Again, the satisfaction level was still off the charts. But it, but those things are relative because they use, because they prioritize them against each other. You know, if your top nine priorities are all above 90 and your second one is 85, you're still killing it. You're knocking it out of the park at 85, but it was your eighth or ninth ranked, uh, service.
Right.
Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was.
Yeah.
Get, trying to get at in, in, in a much less elegant way.
Yeah, I, I think, so, so I, I reworded these areas of opportunity as opposed to like, like, necessarily areas of emphasis, because I think these are, these are areas where we could continue. We should continue to focus. These are things that we need to do. We know we need to do these things anyway. We would never drop any of these things off of our list of priorities. But I think the, as opposed to saying we're not doing a good job at some of these, we are. We're just, these things by that formula are very important to our residents and we should continue to focus on them. They want us to continue to focus on them.
Go ahead, Bob.
They, uh, yeah, I, and I don't know if this is necessarily a good idea. I know that our chances of getting the state of Kansas to do anything about it is, uh, probably limited. But I think concerning the cleanup of litter and debris, that a, a lot of it, we had 165,000 cars going down I-35 and that's where I see our litter in Marion. And I think we're getting the, the brunt, uh, we need to clean up Marion because of all the.
We do. We clean that up.
There on I-35.
Yeah, we, we, we clean that up. Public Works goes out and cleans the, the roads up. So, uh, it, you know, it, that is one of the things that we, I mean, you know, Shawnee Mission Parkway, it doesn't belong to us. So when people talk about the potholes on the bridge, that's the worst stretch of road is that bridge and it's KDOT property. Um, and sometimes if we want stuff to get done, we just have to do it ourselves. But if you, if you, um, do it too often and make it too easy, KDOT's never ever going to do it. So there's a balance there between you need to come deal with your stuff and hey, this needs to be dealt with today. Does that make sense? It's just one of those things we have to deal with.
Well, I've seen some comments on Nextdoor about, uh, the litter along I-35. I can, or it is bad, so.
Oh, it's on 435. I mean, the trash trucks, there's stuff blowing out of the back of tracks trucks. I mean, it's, yeah, it is, it is not good. Um, but unless I'm directed that I-35 becomes our priority, I mean, it, we're, we're going to kind of clean it on the schedule that we clean it now because we really shouldn't be cleaning it at all, but we do clean it several times a year.
And maybe we just need to reach out to Kansas to do it more often and maybe the squeaky wheel, you know, gets the oil or something. So that might be a possibility.
Sure. We can put Billy, we, we'll put Billy on it. Um, then we had, uh, several community questions. So we had, uh, uh, five questions that we asked. And so this is all of the respondents that agree, strongly agree with the following priorities. So we have a focus on revitalization downtown of that and redevelopment of downtown, 68%. Uh, agreed or strongly agreed that that's what we should be prioritizing. Continue to support a public art program, 65% agreed or strongly agreed. Continue policy of open burning. I think this probably puts this issue to rest at least for three more years. Two thirds of your residents almost, uh, agree or strongly agree with the policy of open burning. Uh, attract a grocery store with possible incentives, 57% agreed or strongly agreed. And then invest in bike line lanes or majors, on major streets is 45%. Uh, I think probably clearly our downtown, uh, issue, something we're already on, something we already know we need to be addressing, that's, uh, that's low hanging fruit. That's a slam dunk that we're starting to spend some time there. I think continue to support an art program, uh, not necessarily a high priority, but I think there's public support that, that art is valuable to our community. Again, I, the, uh, open burning, my read on that is that maintain course on that unless the council decides to take it a different direction. Then I think the attract the grocery store with incentives and bike lanes. Uh, I think there's clearly support there. I don't know that there's overwhelming support, but I think whatever we do in those areas, we just need to be cautious and thoughtful about and make sure that, uh, we are checking back in with the public at, uh, the appropriate times to make sure that we are, um, uh, you know, that they know what we're doing, that what we're doing is aligned with their expectations. And to be quite honest with you, um, there are several, um, several percentage points of folks in here that are kind of undecided, that are neutral on these issues. So while attract the grocery store, maybe only 57 that are strongly agree or agree, there's probably 20 or 30 percent, at least 20% that are neutral, which I would consider those folks up for grabs. So if we're thoughtful and we're communicating and there, and there are opportunities where something might have some value, we potentially could make that number higher. This is 57% of people that just blindly say we should do this based upon the concept. I, yeah, I think that there's the potential that again, if we're thoughtful and we're, we're well planned, we could get more people on board with, uh, this item and possibly the invest in bike lanes. So that's, that's kind of my read on those. Any differing reads or any? Okay. Any questions about any of this? Any, any questions I didn't cover? There's a, you know, variety of data points that are in here, uh, that I'm happy to, I've got my survey in front of me that I can dig out if there was a question that, that you wanted to chat about or didn't get addressed or didn't get its due, uh, attention.
I think the, I think the report was, is really good. My only concern is that our ratings are so high that the rest of the area may want to throw us out of their pool. So that's my biggest concern. Anybody else have any concerns? Good presentation. We'll, uh, see how we do in three years. And if you can't get the information, I know you'll, you'll forward that in.
I will. I will, I will absolutely see, uh, see, see what I can get. The, I'll see how far we can narrow it down. I mean, I can see if it's Johnson County, Northeast Johnson County, the Kansas side of, clearly they have the data. So.
Right. And, and most of us recognize that when we are compared to other cities, whether it be good or bad, it's not Blue Springs and Independence or Bonner Springs or, you know, it's going to be Mission, Rowan Park, Lenexa, Bubble Park. And so, I mean, those are the cities that we, I guess, compete with in many ways. Uh, I still think we're going to excel and exceed. And it, but you know, I wouldn't be surprised that we're, we're right where some of them are because some of these cities do an excellent job, just like we do in certain, in the areas. It'd be good to see. Okay. Well, I'm going to close this out and move to our, our monthly, uh, of the finance report. And Oliver, are you out there somewhere?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Good evening. Um, I think that, uh, finally now that February, we're through February, we have a full year of sales tax data and, um, I was very pleased to see that much as we had been thinking, we were only slightly down for the year uh, at 2% or $256,000. So, um, I feel like I say the same thing every, uh, every finance report, but this is good news and very happy to see that we finished the year in that way. Um, we're starting the year, uh, well, in other revenue categories. We're, uh, a little ahead of budget on, on most other revenues. So hopefully 2021 will be a great year and we'll all be together soon.
Great. Any questions? Uh, Mr. Neal?
This isn't directly related, uh, to your, to the report, but have we received any, uh, statistics from Johnson County breakdown on the valuations yet? The residential versus the commercial, uh, valuations? I, I know I got my notice, um, in the past week or so. So I just don't know if the, any of the statistics have been pulled together yet that you're available, that are available. Because I do want to know that as soon as we, as soon as we can.
We have received those and I believe Mr. Engel is preparing to send something out on those, I thought.
They, they were in the admin report on Friday, I believe. I'll verify. You're, are you, you're talking about the reevaluation report?
Yeah, I guess I missed that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe I sent that, um.
You did. It was there. The full report. I don't know about, um, looking just at Merriam's portion.
Yeah, it's the full report.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks again, Donna, for your advice and, and then update. Uh, let's move to staff items. Are there any staff items this evening, Mr. Engel?
Yeah, the only item I had is that, uh, this morning, uh, um, I signed on to opposition testimony to a House Bill 2445, uh, that would exempt, uh, health clubs from property tax. That is a bill that's being pushed by the owner of Genesis, who owns, uh, health clubs all around Kansas, uh, and also is about half a million dollars in arrears on his property taxes to four different counties in Johnson County. So he has aligned, uh, forces throughout the state to push an exemption for, um, health clubs because of the competition that is being provided by cities. Uh, we believe that that is a slippery slope to simply say that because city might have a climbing wall in their community center that all of your urban air type places don't have to pay taxes or because you set up a gym and a civic room, you don't have to pay your property taxes. So, uh, just letting everyone know that, that, that I did submit that on behalf of the city. I felt like, um, considering we just repaved that street and as much as we worked with, uh, that property owner and the surrounding neighborhood, paying property taxes is the right thing to do at that parcel. So just sharing that with the council. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any question.
Any questions, anybody? No? Okay. All right. And, um, no new business. Uh, I think we're going to make it, we're going to attempt another first for the city of Merriam. And that, that, and that is we're going to virtually have an executive session. And I was noticed, I noticed that maybe we should change our motion slightly because at the end we're going to resume in council chambers. I guess you could say virtually in the council chambers, but something to that effect because we aren't going to resume there once we're done. I would say maybe we're going to resume, uh, to, uh, in the, in the assigned Zoom chat room or whatever to finish them. So do I have somebody brave enough to wait through this executive session, Mr. Pape?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll move the council recess into executive session to discuss the city administrator's performance review and contract as justified by KSA 75 dash 4319B1, which allows the city council to recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Present be the governing body, the human resources manager, the open meeting will resume in Zoom.
9:00 PM, 15 minutes to be enough, Mayor.
Uh, yes, that'd be fine. So we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, leave this.
I need to second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a second? And I guess I need some kind of vote. So, uh, Ann Clark, would you please do so?
Sure. Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember called on?
Aye.
Councilmember Nat?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
See you over there.
Be here when you get back. Are you, um, are you in contact with Stephanie? So if she has any problems that?
Yes. So, um, she's going to let Jenna know when they're coming back in.
Gotcha.
And we, I mean, we have everybody's number. So if there's an issue. She was going to Jenna know when they were coming back into our open session so she could be looking for them and, and get them all back in. So.
Awesome.
Yeah, we'll see.